Here.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll turn it over to David Roberts.
I just wanted to say just a couple of words before the new councilman is sworn into office. But I have been fortunate to conserve in this seat for sixteen years. It's been a pleasure of mine. I've met some really wonderful people in the process, both sitting at this table, but also people out there, and particularly city staff. And so, and I may have lost the election, but I didn't lose my interest in the board. And I will probably be around some more. I plan to remain active in the city. And, you know, I've got some interesting projects that are ongoing. And as a matter of fact, I've got some interesting projects that haven't raised their head yet. But particularly the people that are currently serving on the city council line. It's been a real pleasure, and we will see you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the work that you did. And at the next meeting, we'll be having a reception for not only you, but for Robert Kraus as well. And I hope you guys can join us for that. Appreciate it, David.
Thank you.
Item C is the swearing in of newly elected and re-elected city council members by District Court Judge Jeff Purgen.
We're honored to have this report.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm honored to be here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, raise your hands and read after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
That I have not paid.
That I have not paid.
Or contributed.
Or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Procure by nomination or election.
Procure by nomination or election.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
All right, aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor or councilman.
As mayor or councilman.
Of the City of Moore, Oklahoma.
Of the City of Moore, Oklahoma.
Congratulations. At the next meeting, we'll have Terry sworn in. Item D is a roll call.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Summer.
Here.
Terry Catherine.
Adam White.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 4, 2016. Item B, accept quick claim deed from SMC Investments Marvin Hayworth for Southwest 34th Street right-of-way located in the southeast quarter of Section 27, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Arbor Gardens Park and west of Telephone Road. Item C, accept quick claim deed to the SMC Investments Marvin Hayworth for Telephone Road right-of-way located in the southeast quarter of Section 27, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Willow Bend Boulevard. Item D, declare a 2010 Ford Explorer S surplus, then number 1FMEU7DE4AUAA99193. Item E is reappoint Brent Willbarger to the Pioneer Library, excuse me, Pioneer Library System Board of Trustees for a three-year term. Item F is a grant easement in Fairmore Park to OGN E for utility root location. And item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015-2016 in the amount of $3,971,010.76.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Melissa Summer.
Yes.
Adam White.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Yes, item Perry's. Item number four is receive a report on the draft of Janeway Southwest 17th redevelopment master plan.
May I, Mayor and Council? We have started the master planning for this property back in the first year. It's been some time now, and we believe that we are almost to the end point of the planning for this community. And, but we're not at the end, so we still have time to make comments on the site plan and the plans that we have put together. Anthony McDermond, the power of the next year, is here tonight. He's our consultant on this project, and he will go through the site and explain to you all the details that we've come up with so far. Do you need us to hear our comments?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be with you tonight. Time to turn this over to you and the ladies and try the laptop. As I said, we've been working on the master plan now for several months, and we are at a place where we are presenting the draft master plan and some of the processes that went into presenting and developing the draft master plan. I note that many of you have seen a similar presentation before, but I thought for our purposes that we might start a little refresher on the site, where the site is. And as most of you know, this is the oil park, trailer park, the site on which has been predeveloped by the City of Moore with federal funding. The site is approximately fourteen acres. Coming into the site is 17th Street from the east, and then Max Morgan from the south, as you can see here. And there were some significant master plan requirements that were promulgated at the start of the process, namely that the project should replace approximately 200 housing units, which were primarily trailers, lost in the storm, that there would be a Southwest 17th Street connection to Telephone to replace the destroyed infrastructure and provide a way for adjacent neighborhood, homes in the adjacent neighborhood to get out to the section lines. And that we should provide a public, dynamic public space with amenities. During the process, we went through a visual preference study of about 50 or 60 images that we asked folks to comment on, basically vote if you liked the image, if you didn't like the image, or if you were neutral on the image. So what I've done here is I've just pulled the slides out of the visual preference study to indicate the strong preferences, the images that it has strong support from our group.
And those images are just designs from some other city or something?
Yes.
Not something that has been as a possible, all right, it's a possible option here, but that's not something designed specifically for Oklahoma?
That's correct. Yes, we were just asking people to respond very quickly in a very visceral way. What image, you know, does this feel attractive to you? This is not what we're promising you, but does this feel like an attractive environment? Is this something that registers as a positive? Streetscapes. We went through a series of ideas, whether it was residential, commercial, street scape, public space, those kinds of things. So there's about eight or nine images here that scored very highly. And... Ironically, our new farmers market looks a lot like this. And I don't think it really surprises there. Generally speaking, those images probably resonate well with most of us as we have places we'd like to see, or if you feel comfortable and attractive. The project that we've been engaged to complete has a lot of parts, a tremendous number of parts. We have eleven tasks. And within those tasks, there are multiple boxes to check, if you will, in the development of the master plan. Tasks one, two, three, and five are largely complete. We're about halfway through with task four, and I've highlighted in red our presentation tonight, the presentation of the draft plan, the city council. In the bold, the bold are the tasks that have been complete, and the light are the tasks yet to be completed. As you can see, it's a long, it's a very long list. One of the central pieces of the plan is a market study or a market analysis, which studies data to come up with a statistical guide to what would make sense in this environment in terms of residential number of units, the absorption, how long, what size of mix they should be, whether this site will support commercial development, and if it will, how much commercial development, what kind of commercial development. And all this data is, or a lot of data goes into making these assumptions or predictions of development. The, you can see, you can see here, lower left or upper left, a synopsis of the land use plan is for retail restaurant between $18,000 and $36,000, where the residential high density at 10 units to 20 units per acre would yield north of 200 units. And then on the white-hand side is a prediction of the mix of the units. So the mix would be one bed, two bed, three bed. And actually, we have efficiencies in our plan as well. Predominantly one bed. And a lot of two beds. So the major use would be a one bed, next would be two, and then behind that, there are extra efficiencies. We had a visioning meeting on February 23, and we sketched a lot of ideas guided and formed by our community and by our planning advisory committee. These are the sketches that we produced. They really helped us, they really helped to inform how the streets connect, how the development might look in terms of massing. We have quite a bit of input and interest from surrounding neighbors who shared with us some of their challenges, primarily getting in and out of the neighborhood with connectors, street connectors, and then their strong affinity for the park component of the project. So that, as you know, Little River is to the north, and it's been completely revised and completely redesigned. So there's an opportunity for us to connect Little River Park with trails to this site, to this redevelopment site, which is something that universally was an attractive idea for everybody that was talking to. We held a design charrette on March 1, and the design charrette, we began to explore in even more detail what the streets, what the buildings, what the relationship of open space, the creation of an open space, a meaningful open space that had a unique identity, not just a more, but regionally, something, a space or a place that you could immediately identify. This development, it's in Moore, and it's in Oklahoma, and in our region, it would be unique. So we explored a lot of different street patterns, a lot of different ways that buildings could be arranged, the way that the buildings relate to open space, which also would be a amenity, a major amenity for the housing. So as you can see, we went through seven different sketches. We voted on every sketch, so all the sketches were developed with our community in the room. Every sketch, then, we voted on, and then we revised those sketches and redid them according to the comments that we received on them. And at the end, we came up with a preferred concept. And the preferred concept is bottom right. And then we spent some time at the end of the day, sort of fleshing it out with a little more detail. And you can see, you can see on your screen, you can see on this screen, the sketch that we came up with at the end of the day. And you can see the idea of this arc road, the building, the buildings around the arc road, the walls of the street, the public space, the green space, the oval, and then commercial development bottom right on the plan. So then we started to explore, I'm sorry, it's hard to see. Then we started to explore the geometries of the site. In other words, if the street pattern looks like this, let's lay out a right-of-way, let's start putting lots of development on those, on the plan. Let's see how large the lots are, let's see if they work, and how much they will yield. So here you see, we basically divided the property up into three lots. The two lots on the left are the residential lots, and then the bottom right is the commercial lot. We also explored utilities, due diligence that we did, we had to explore utilities. Olson, the local office Olson, met with your Works, with Beolia, and with contractor, your utilities contractor, and literally laid out a network or skeleton of utilities that would serve the site, and verified that there was capacity, that we had, you know, the right services, the right place. And you see here, represented blue is water, and green is syrup. And we were sure that there's plenty of capacity here, and that it works very well. We also had a look at a drainage channel. Again, we worked with a consulting engineer, Bichette Martin, and we had a lot of spirited exchanges with the engineers. And our challenge there was to handle water, so in other words, solve the hydrology, but also in a way that we found was sustainably. And so we had lots of fun conversations. I'll just characterize them as fun conversations, where we knew we had to accommodate the water, but we wanted to push the envelope a little bit in terms of how the water was contained and what the banks of the channel looked like. So from the left, you can see the first sketch, top left is the first sketch. And I pushed back a little bit and asked if we could have a more natural-looking channel and carry the water. And visiting with Bichette, we started to sort of get together and communicate a little more successfully on the look of the channel. I think right now, we are heading in the direction of natural stone banks, and we are also heading in the direction of retaining water in the channel, which at first we didn't think we could do, but now evidently, if we follow a few simple guidelines, we can retain water in the channel. So for the width of the channel, which is about sixty to seventy feet, I think, between the two walls, now we are talking about a series of low-water dams that will retain a full 50-foot wide body of water between eighteen inches and a foot deep. So it will look more like the images here than what we're, you know, what we're starting with.
I'm just curious, when you talk about the low-water dams, would it be solid block of concrete or would it be more of a natural-looking structure?
That's a great question. Obviously, we would promote for a more natural stone look. And it may, in fact, councilman, it may be that we need to do concrete, but we'll face the problem with that. But my hope is that we can come up with a state that looks pretty good and works very well. We also did, we also had a traffic analysis done. TEC is working with the city on doing a traffic analysis. And I'll skip very quickly through this, but the analysis basically divides out the site and the surrounding area into zones. The traffic generated by those different activities or those different use groups is then put onto a chart, then that is used to predict the amount of traffic that would flow through the site. You see, you can see from this chart that the summary is about 6,500 trips, daily trips, on 17th, so Max Morgan, primarily on 17th. And that then we asked for a recommendation of the section of the road that would handle that kind of capacity, and a recommendation or a point of view for the way the... the way the streets should intersect. So as you know, Max Morgan and Seventeenth need to be connected. The way we connect them has to be engineered, has to work, everybody has to feel comfortable that we've done the best job we can with traffic. What we've ended up with, we studied several options, what we ended up with was the idea of Seventeenth and Old Janeway, basically the arched street of the site, would be a two-lane collector, neighborhood collector. Max Morgan would tee into it, and the intersection there would be a three-way stop sign to facilitate pedestrian crossing at that place. And it renders a very high level of service. Here are the trips, one of the, you know, I really don't understand this, but I don't know what those numbers mean, but evidently, they're good.
Right, we can't really see it anyway, so. It's just a white screen for us.
The most important thing is that I do have a really level service on a chart, and it's good. So it's an intersection that works well. So then we expanded the geometry of the roads right away and took our traffic information, our utility information, our market study, and started to develop and flesh out the plan in terms of where are the buildings, how big are the buildings, where does you park, where's the public space, and how do you navigate through all those things? This is the black line drawing that shows. So as you can see, the housing is to the west of the site. We've chosen to pull the buildings to the street to give them a street presence and an edge to the public space. Park, all the parking is behind or to the west of the buildings, which forms, which does several things really. It buffers the parking, it shields it visually from the street, but it, these are also, these also about to the northwest. This is the back of a single family and a townhouse development, so it forms a good, it mitigates between those uses. And just does a kind of neat job of putting the parking in an efficient way where it feels like it wants to be. The great wall is the public space, the amenity, which we think provides a lot of potential for flexible use and feels like it does belong to the citizens. It will be connected, it will be connected by a trail system to the north, to Little River, and it also has the potential of connecting trails along Max Morgan to Fourth, to Nineteenth, sorry, and then along our new road at Seventeenth to South. So we look very carefully at the trail network and the cycle network, and there is a tremendous amount of connectivity, tremendous amount of connectivity. Finally, our industrial site plan, master plan, which shows a little more clarity where we anticipate the green space to be, the commercial developments bottom right, the residential developments in the west, and the channel, which we hope, we hope we can be engineers who retain water and be a really attractive water feature where the current drainage facility is today. And just very, very quickly, we conducted a tremendous number of interviews, kind of a lot of interface, meetings, interface, or we interfaced with the community, with the planning advisory committee, city council, C G, advisory committee, I think everybody's been involved to this point. We also interviewed stakeholders, fifteen stakeholders, which represented some staff, some council, planning commission, developer, school system, local business owner, and there were certainly, the results of those interviews showed, which I had in Seattle, there were a lot of, there were many common themes through those interviews that we highlighted and tried to incorporate into our plan. In a, that's it, sort of in a quick overview. You will have an opportunity later to, as the planning develops and we work out the economics of the housing piece and the economics of the commercial piece, we will have more data and we will have more data and we will have another opportunity for input. But that's where we are today.
I always have a question in regards to the vertical element, have we, do you have any input or ideas or is that, it's part of this, do you still feel confident that that's something that will be included here?
No, I, Councilman, I like the idea. I like the idea of vertical elements, something that adds to the unique sense of place. We've discussed a lot of different ideas, but that is something that we could, that we would enjoy some more of going forward.
And just, just something that I've been interested in and want to be an advocate of, as we continue to grow as a city, is just to be able to tell the story of our history. And doing a little bit of research, this location used to be a dairy farm, had a few of those that were, and for a while I've been able to discover that was the Dyer Farm back in the old days. And if there would be some way that we'd be able to incorporate the history of this area, we talk about letting this be multi-use, multipurpose, with Plaza Towers, I'll venture to speak, down the road, if they were to do a field trip here, there would be a, where they could be able to learn a little bit about Moore's history. And what a great place to tell it in a park or in some of these green spaces or in a development like this. So something just to think about as you and your team continue to work on this and continue to have input as citizens as well as the council.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Item number five is consider ordinance number eight-one-nine-one-six, amend in Part Ten, Chapter Eight, Section Ten dash eight oh six A, providing for punishment for juvenile violations to be established by Part One, Chapter One, Section One dash one oh eight A of the Moore Municipal Code and amending Part Ten, Chapter Eight, Section Ten dash one oh eight C by adding possession of drug paraphernalia and increasing the maximum punishment to five hundred dollars, providing for a repealer and providing for severability.
Mayor Council, the juvenile ordinance that you have here in front of you has not been amended by Council since two thousand and two. Everything from then has been carried forward and brought forward. What we're asking in this ordinance would be to make the fines consistent with the fines for the adult, for the adult offenses, so there's not a lot of confusion. And it does increase the maximum punishment for possession of marijuana from currently zero, two hundred dollars, up to zero five hundred dollars. The judges that do our juvenile court are in favor of this, or aware of this, they've actually, you know, had input, asked the parole office, Michael, to help, and they will assist in, and doing their jobs.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Haynes.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number six is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Haynes.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Lumber.
Yes.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item seven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Item B, approve payment of a workers' compensation compromise settlement in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars to Brian Foudy, W C number two zero one two dash one two three nine six, R, unauthorized placement on the adware on taxes levels. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, six cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Haynes.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Lumber.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Okay, on the, we're not going to recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority. We don't have a chairman or vice chairman here tonight, who will put that on through the next meeting to a point, and for the vice mayor as well. So we'll put that on for the next time. Randy, do I need to have a motion to table that on the meeting part of it? For the whole economic development or just skip over it?
We have a warrant. I would think we need a motion to
Table?
recess until two weeks from now.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion that we recess until two weeks from now, or it's to the item of course.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Lumber.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Haynes.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, item number ten is new business. We'll recess the Economic Development Authority vote. We'll just convene to the city council meeting. Let the record reflect that all the members were present or still present. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Anyone like to speak? There's no one signed up. Okay. Item B, item from the city council or trustees.
I'd just like to say thank you to Todd and his team for a great job this weekend. The grand opening was great, I missed the Saturday events, but I know Friday was great and everybody I've talked to was super impressed, so congratulations to you and your group.
Absolutely. It was very well attended, so it was good. Like I say, welcome, Adam.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I have a couple. I keep me in the research, at the launch studios on Main Street recently, they did some renovation work, they've solved their building, and it looks great. Also had the business at a shopping center at twelve and Janeway, an older business, been there for years, that we have resurfaced their parking lot, which is just encouraging to see the business owners, our community, take care of their properties, and they'll benefit from that as well as everybody that lives there, hopefully will become full, they'll make money on the rent, people have opportunities to shop, the city will benefit from the tax dollars. And just a couple other quick things. One, Council, I would like for us to really consider doing a study session or retreat this year. I know the past couple of years it just hasn't worked out, but we have with AdWeb, but Melissa hasn't had opportunity to be a part of that, and we'll be filling the vacancy in Ward One soon. So we'll have several, or three, yeah, Council, it could be a great opportunity for us just to get together and meet. And Mr. Ed, if you could maybe just look at that and do emails to Council and see if you can find the date that might work well. I know, I know that's always a struggle, trying to get everybody's calendars, but I think it's just important.
I think since you mentioned that, let's do the thirty-day, start the timer on thirty-day notice. Anybody wants to fill out for that empty slot in Ward One? Is that okay if you answer?
There had been some discussion, I'll just mention this earlier, perhaps we don't need thirty days, I mean, some of, whether you want a couple of weeks, or you think thirty days is what's necessary?
During the last election, transparency was the biggest thing out there, so let's be transparent and inform the voters, if they want to sign up, they can, they'll give them thirty days.
So we would like to keep it open for thirty days?
I think so. I mean, not really, but I think you need to give thirty-day notice.
No, I don't have an issue with that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Great, great.
I mean, we can do it in ten if you want, but
Well, I think ten's too, no. I think amendment of two.
Two weeks.
Yeah, I think that would be the minimum.
Two weeks or thirty days, I think is sufficient, but if we want to do thirty, that's fine. Two weeks is fine. We'll do it at the next council meeting, how about that? By then we'll have plenty of opportunities, it'll take another week after that to go through them all.
Yeah. So by the next council meeting, we'll be presented with the applicants?
Then at that point, I think it would be appropriate to do a work-study session at that time for the council to go over them.
Perfect.
Yeah. Sounds good. We'll do that, say, an hour before the meeting, so have the regular meeting at the eight-thirty, which is required, and be here at five-thirty the next week. Does that work?
Sure.
We're gonna have a reception.
We're gonna have a reception. And I think the retreat thing that Mark's talking about would need to be separate from the city council.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not there, but then I'm stuck on work-study session to review the applications. And we could do that after the meeting even, next week, or two weeks.
By the time we can get it, we can get it out on social media and all that tomorrow.
Okay.
So then, I mean, we can do that, but then you're gonna be looking at, say, thirteen days or whatever for folks to get their, if that's sufficient, fine, we can do that. And then get you the names by then, but then probably at the next meeting is when you might want to
Discuss.
Discuss, do interviews, this or that.
Okay.
Because we won't have time to have anybody here if you want
Right, it must be a study session for council.
You can do that, we can do that.
Okay, we'll just do that at the end of the meeting.
Maybe, maybe try to look at one of the appointments on the first council meeting in May.
Right. That work?
No.
That's the study.
That's the second, yeah.
Yeah, that's the study.
It'd be the first council meeting in June, right?
No.
Second one, second council in May. Okay.
I won't be here for the May second meeting, but that doesn't matter.
Way to go. Okay.
I don't think I would.
All right, I'm good with that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, any others?
Yeah, is it possible to get an update on the intersection there at Fourth and telephone? I've had a couple people asking me what the status is, didn't know if we could get an update. an update.
Excuse me, I actually talked to Division Three with ODOT this afternoon, and they tell me they've already left the contract.
Wait, wait just a minute, are you talking about telephone road being closed north of Fourth?
Yeah, have north of...
Yeah, you were just talking about the roadway construction stand that's going on now.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. All the storm sweaters in, the stabilization's in, and they're starting to curb together, so all the components are in place, and now it's just curbing better and resurfacing.
All right, thank you.
That should move.
Pretty quick answer.
Pretty quick. I was talking about the intersection just a second.
No, much shall.
That was good information I received this afternoon. ODOT has already left the contract that they're going to nail diamond grind all of their concrete sections of State Highway Thirty-Seven pretty full.
Great.
And we all know it's turned rough for a year.
Are they wanting to turn that over to us once they get that paved?
That hasn't been discussed, hopefully it won't.
They, they...
It has been, it has been discussed.
It has been discussed, we talked at breakfast.
Not lately, but I think their ultimate goal is to turn it over to...
Well, I need a bridge there first.
Bridge, yeah.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's rough.
Okay. Okay, any items from the city manager, trust manager?
I wanted just to mention, I mentioned in the email that I sent out to you all earlier about doing a survey out there to do with recycling. I want to make sure that was a consensus of everybody to go ahead with that, to that's where I, I guess I kind of thought we were. Melissa emailed me and wondered about that.
Yeah, my concern was kind of what we were going to gain out of the survey. And sometimes surveys, even mail them out, what kind of participation do you get? And, yeah, how we were going to handle that, and is, does that then decide whether or not we send it to a vote? You know, all that, kind of what the purpose of the survey was, was where my question was coming from, and was it, was it really necessary? And how this council felt?
I would just, just so y'all know where I'm coming from, my thoughts, I think it would be important for us to do a survey, something other than social media. Not everybody utilizes social media, and I would love, I want us as a city, everything we can to be in contact with many, as many of our residents as we can, that's where it will possibly be impacted by this if we were to, to move forward with it. It will help me as a council person to make a decision if this is something which the political voters are not basing upon. Just to give everybody an opportunity to give their two cents.
Sure. What would the sampling be for the, about how many? Because it's tough, and I completely agree with you, Mark, but I just, if we're sending out a thousand or fifteen hundred, you know, it's tough at that point to really determine if that's adequate.
We can, we can send out a survey to all of our utility customers if we wanted to. We've done that before and might get, might get a thousand comments. We did have a little bit of concern about doing it, an online survey, because anybody, whether they live here or not, can...
Can comment.
Can comment or can vote, and we didn't feel like that was appropriate. But it also occurred to me that we can, we can do the survey or, and get it going or wait until we have the whole council together as, in your study session or in your retreat session, to have a chance to have a little bit more conversation about it in terms of how, when, and where, that sort of thing. We can do that as well.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with a survey if that's what everybody is, you know, thinks needs to be done. I'll say I've gotten some calls lately that are against recycling, but they have also said if it goes to, they're, they're against this council deciding, and they said if it goes to a vote and the people decide, then obviously that, that's the way it works and is, and I assured them that this council was not, was more than likely not going to decide it'd go, if anything, through a vote of the people, you know, if that was going to be implemented.
So basically, just the survey would just determine whether or not the majority of the residents wanted to go for a vote, not, it's not a...
Whether they're, I mean, I think whether they're in favor of recycling or not would be part of it, and then...
Are they willing to possibly pay for it?
Pay for it if, if it were to go to a vote.
Okay.
And if we were to include that survey of monthly water bill, utility bill, there being the additional, by adding another sheet of paper, would increase our posts? Do you know, I'm not used to, they would put a blank sheet of paper in there and...
They did.
It, it might some, but it wouldn't be significant.
Okay, so we're doing them out anyways.
And then the cost, I assume we're going to bring in someone independent, third-party in to review the vote, or are we going to do that internally or?
Well, we...
Well, just trying to understand the cost associated with, you know, before we decide to send it out to...
The cost associated with the service.
To do a survey.
Oh, to do a survey.
We can have, we can have Todd's there, they're over there.
We've done several surveys, and we can do those pretty good, and we'll be able to get you the results.
Okay, okay.
And I also went to the Central Park on Saturday. It was a great time, and just really sold on the, on the Central Park. I'm glad that the city, the voters of our city move forth. I know back in twenty twelve, our first round of council wasn't positive that that was the right thing in the direction that we should go, but just having, looking at it and seeing it, all the people that have been to it, just how awesome it looks, it's really going to be just, and, and everybody here probably knew that, but it's going to be a great addition to our community, and it's going to really be not just a name, a central park, a real gathering place for this community and people to go and just hang out and enjoy Moore area. So I'm, I'm looking forward to using it. Great job, Todd and all of your team, and everything that's out there.
Anything else? Next item is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
I have something, and I don't know, okay, I have a website, I write about my heroes, like the police department, the fire department. I love Moore, I like to tour around town and draw on the sidewalk and stuff. But I need, well, I was wondering, can Moore have, like, could I be Moore's mascot? Because I want to be able to draw up on the sidewalk at the police station, like, my heroes work here, and positive messages to our parents. And then I want to do other stuff, like, to promote community involvement. I love the new park. It's got an accessible playground, which is, like, shocking, the first I've ever seen of that. And anyway, so, I don't know, but I also, I, I need, like, official city gear. I want to get, to get more, like, hats to wear around town and draw on to...
I would like a hat.
I, I used to get them out.
So then, I need the official Moore mascot.
Well, you know, I know, I think we have a mascot, the, was it Ralph?
Oh, no.
Ralph, who was the teacher?
Ralph Morey, that was a different one.
Yeah, he was at the, our park, and, so I don't know, I don't know that, that we have a mascot officially, but we love to have citizens involved in our community, and there's lots of opportunities for, for you to be involved in various ways, and I encourage you to look for openings on the Parks Board, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and we're always looking for...
If you'll, if you'll stop, if you'll stop by the offices when you can, I can, we can get, get her a hat and some things like that.
Really? Okay, thank you.
She has done some very nice chalk work in front of City Hall, in front of the police department, so, very nice.
I just love my heroes. I believe that the world will be a better place if we all start celebrating the good people in our communities who make it good. You know, I just think, like, I don't know, I see Moore itself as a call to action, for me to be more and do more and to just, I don't know, make people smile more, so I just do what I can, but that would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Which call for the vote?
Jason Boyer.
Yes.
Melissa Sumner. Yes.
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 Yes, we adjourned.